All right, as a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos, I'm the acting chair for the Newbury Planning Board. Please allow me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond to these affirmatives. George Morse?
Yes.
Thank you, George. Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody Knight?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody. Tom Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor?
Yes.
Thank you. Kristin Grubbs?
Yes.
The microphone is on.
Hi, Kristin. Hi.
Anticipated speakers and presenters on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Tom Z?
Here.
Great. Bob Griffin?
Present.
Michael McNiff?
Present, thank you.
Great. Good evening. This is February 1, 2023, opening meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which extends the governor's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provision of the open meeting law generally until March 31st. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convened by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID 83271413056 or by calling 929-205-6099 and entering the meeting ID number when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and our telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcasted live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom and at www.tnct.org and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to this meeting for review. Applicants and other representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. State your name, your attention app you have been called upon. So here are some ground moves. So before we turn to the first end of the agenda, here are grounds this evening to allow for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate minutes. As a chair, we'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will then go down the list of board members inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, all intending except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with the mute button or on your phone with a star six to toggle to mute or unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording, and my dog just walked over for a pet. For any responses, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. With regards to public comment, there'll be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click with gray hand that appears, please ensure that your name is fully incorrectly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your keypad. I will then allow questions and comments for members of the public who have raised their hands in the order which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click the raise hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask questions or make a comment. I will afford the applicant participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raise hand column. And again, for the participant applicant representatives an opportunity to speak. Should there be any physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record. And again, the participant applicant representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues have not yet been addressed. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call votes. All right, let me see what our agenda looks like here, so I just have to flip over screens. All right, so we have an appearance tonight from Tom Z of Zenko LLC. It's a submission of an ANR plan to create a non-buildable parcel. Partial A from lot number seven to Fieldstone Lane, assesses map R02 lot 13G of the 15 Coleman Road OSRD owner applicant Tom Z of Zenko LLC. Tom, I believe you now have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Tom's already go for High Street North End over. Martha, are you able to pull that plan up?
Are you able all to see that?
Not yet.
Not yet.
There we go.
Here it comes. There you go.
There we are. Thanks, Martha. This, I think we've discussed this quite a bit. This draft has been circulating in some form for some time. Again, this is just the final step in the carving off of the Father Stone Witchstone parcel in order to donate it to the town, care of the historical commission. And, you know, I think it's a relatively straightforward plan. It's something we've been discussing for quite some time and hopefully we have this together so that we can get it wrapped up.
Wonderful. Thanks, Tom. Let me see if the board members have any questions regarding this first. Martha, is there anything that we need to add to what Tom has just said?
No, I think that's it. This is, this is in response basically to one of the conditions that was in the approval that some means would be made to protect the Witchstone Father Stone in perpetuity and everybody agreed that this was the best way to do it to carve off this parcel and convey it to the historical commission on behalf of the town.
Beautiful. George, any questions, sir?
I have no comments.
Thank you, thank you. Leslie, any questions or comments?
I just would like to say, Tom, thank you very much. You have been very generous with the town and I also would like to thank the historical commission for stepping up and taking care of this piece of this jewel in our town.
You're very welcome, Leslie. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. Woody, any questions or comments?
No, I don't have any questions or comments, but thank you.
Okay. I don't have Larry here. I don't have Mary. I don't have anything to add except I'd like to echo what Leslie has said. Tom, thank you for preserving this historical piece of our community in the Father Stone. I think it's noteworthy and we appreciate your cooperation and all the modifications that have been required to achieve this.
Peter, I very much appreciate that too. When I, if I could just be so bold as to ask if out of consideration for my business needs in the next couple of days, if it's possible for this to be, if it's voted to to approve, if somebody who's authorized could sign this plan tomorrow so we can go to record, it would really be an enormous help to me.
I understand. Very good. At this time, I would entertain a motion to endorse the ANR plan.
Motion to endorse.
Thank you, Leslie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Motion has been made and seconded. On the motion, is there any discussion? No discussion. George, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And the chairs vote as well, so this passes unanimously. Thank you, Tom, and we will do our best to get everything done for you as timely as possible.
Okay, thanks very much.
Great. What time do we have, Martha?
I've got about 7:11, so we've got four minutes until the hearing opens.
So I will need you to drop your screen so I can get my screen, so I can do, I think, next on our agenda is our financial report, is that right?
That is correct.
All right, let me see if I can pull that up. Do, 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 over here. So always interesting when you have fields laid on top of fields when you're doing a meeting. Open recent financial report. There we go. Okay, the planning board financial report for January of 2023 payroll and invoices authorized. Number one is payroll warrants for the planning director, PR 23-15 for pay period ending 1/14/2023 and PR 23-16 for pay period ending 1/28/23. Planning board expenses, Verizon Wireless, planning board iPad, 1/31/23. And I think that finishes the financial reports. Right, so we have, let's see, still a couple of minutes. Do we want to go into the directors' report, Martha?
I'm sure we could get into that. It's relatively short.
Beautiful.
First of all, I wanted to let everybody know that we have submitted the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning Action Plan. That was submitted yesterday morning. So that's done and now we get on, have to get on to actually developing the zoning and identifying our areas for real and retaining a consultant, which we talked about last time.
Wonderful.
So I'm not quite sure what the process is actually, whether they will be getting back to us if they have any questions or concerns about the plan that we submitted. But again, what I've been told is that it's basically to indicate our good faith effort to comply within the deadlines that are required and we're not permanently bound to anything that we said in that in terms of location or timeline. Couple of other things, Kristin and I went to 68 Green Street today. There was a meeting regarding.
Kristin, is it? Oh, I'm sorry.
So Pete, do you want to do an introduction?
No, it's your train. Go for it.
Well, we're very, very, very happy to welcome Kristin Grubbs to our planning department as the assistant town plan. So she and I are going to be working very, very closely together and it's wonderful to have her on board.
Welcome aboard, Kristin. We're great. You're back.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're pretty lucky to have you and Martha working together. I think it's great team.
Thank you. It's really nice to see you all and, you know, I think it's, I feel very lucky to have had a short time serving on the planning board. So I understand what it is to be a volunteer for the town and to work from your seat. And now I feel very lucky to be sitting in Town Hall with Martha, who I couldn't be happier to be working with. And all the staff at Town Hall have just been great and welcoming me. So thanks to everybody. Glad to be here.
Great.
Excuse me, should I keep going?
Please do.
All right, so we went to 68 Green Street today. There was an onsite meeting to talk about landscaping along the roadway and some changes given the existing conditions now. So the applicant is intending to provide a plan for the board to review. Probably at the February 15th meeting, we're also going to be reviewing most likely the homeowner's documents, restrictive covenants, and they will be asking for a full release of lot three. The board had done a partial release previously to allow them to get a building permit. And they are ready, basically ready to convey that house and the house on lot one is under construction. So I expect we'll have several agenda items related to that at the 15th meeting. So I've got 7:15. Do you want to go into the public hearing and then I can come back to this after?
That'd be great. Thank you, Martha. Okay, so it is 7:15, so we will enter into our public hearing. We have a concurrent public hearing this evening with regards to 170 Orchard Street, which is map R20 lot 43A. The owner is the estate of Lewis Bulgaris, care of Diane Yurkovich. And I hope I haven't butchered that too much. It's a definite, first, we have a definitive subdivision plan application for what will be called Fields Way of 170 Orchard. And then the second component would be a common driveway special permit application for a common driveway serving two lots and proposed Fields Way subdivision of 170 Orchard Street. Just for clarification, I anticipate that the chair who's absent this evening will mull in going forward. So I do want to clarify that these are two separate applications, the definitive subdivision plan application and common driveway application. So one is going, the subdivision would require a majority of the board, which would be three members in favor for approval of our common driveway special permit that requires super majority of the board, which would be four out of five to vote in favor, just so that we have the, an understanding of that. Woody, I'd ask that you would read the public hearing notices if you wouldn't mind?
Yes. Legal notice, town of Newbury, planning board, public hearing notice, definitive subdivision plan. Residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, February 1st.
Say history quick.
The Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing virtually via Zoom to consider an application submitted by the estate of Lewis Bulgaris for approval of a definitive subdivision plan for a four lot subdivision at 170 Orchard Street, Newbury, Byfield, Massachusetts. Assesses map R20 lot 43A, property owner, estate of Lewis Bulgaris and Diane Yurkovich. The proposed subdivision is shown on drawings entitled Division, Definitive Subdivision Plan for Fields Way. 170 Orchard Street, Newbury, Mass, January 2023. Dated January 4, 2023, prepared by the Griffin Engineering Group LLC and described in accompanying application materials. Copies of the application are on file with the town clerk and in the planning office, 12 Kentways, Suite 101, Byfield, Mass. And are available for review during regular business hours. They may also be viewed on planning board section of the town's website. For more information or to obtain a digital or hard copy of the application, contact planning office by phone at 978-465-0862, extension 312, or by email at planningboard@townofnewbury.org. All members, all persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed subdivision are invited to participate in the hearing remotely at the designated site, designated date and time from their computer, tablet, or smartphone or by telephone by calling 1929-205-6099 US and using meeting ID number Or may watch the meeting live on local access cable channel nine or at www.tncTV.org. Larry Murphy, Chair, Newbury Planning Board. And then it was published in the Newbury Daily News, January 16th and January 23rd of 2023. And then we have the common driveway, legal notice, town of Newbury, planning board, public hearing notice, common driveway special permit. Residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, February 1st, 2023, at 7:15, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing virtually via Zoom to consider an application submitted by the estate of Lewis Bulgaris for a common driveway special permit. For a common driveway to serve two lots, lot three and four, in a proposed four lot subdivision at 170 Orchard Street, Newbury, Byfield, Mass. Assesses map R20 lot 43A, property owner, estate of Lewis Bulgaris and Diane Yurkovich. The proposed common driveway is shown on drawings entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan for Fields Way, 170 Orchard Street, Newbury, Mass, January 2023, dated January 4, 2023, prepared by the Griffin Engineering Group LLC and described in accompanying application materials. Copies of the application are on file with the town clerk and in the planning office, 12 Kentways, Suite 101, Byfield, Mass. And are available for review during regular business hours. But they may also be viewed on the planning board section of the town's website. For more information or to obtain a digital or hard copy of the application, contact the planning office by phone at 978-465-0862, extension 312, or by email, planningboard@townofnewbury.org. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed subdivision are invited to participate in the hearing remotely at the designated date and time from their computer, tablet, or smartphone or by telephone by calling 1929-205-6099 US and using meeting ID number 83271413056. Or may watch the meeting live on local access channel nine or at www.tncTV.org. Larry Murphy, Chair, Newbury Planning Board. And this was published in the Newbury Daily News, January 16th and January 23rd of 2023.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Woody. Appreciate that. Hey, Martha, could you confirm that we've received the proof of mailings for the about notices?
Yes, we have. I've gotten the green cards for all of them. I think there was one that was undeliverable, so that was returned. And I've also gotten proof of the publication of the public hearing notices in the paper.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And who will be speaking on this application?
So I'm Bob Griffin of Griffin Engineering and to my left is Mike McNiff, the principal of MPM Companies. Mr. McNiff is going to give a brief background of his application and then I'll go through the drawings if that's acceptable.
That's great, Bob. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody, for putting your time. A special thanks to Martha Taylor. She's been very helpful over the past two years while we've been trying to help the Bulgaris estate and Mrs. Yurkovich come up with a plan that might be best acceptable for the town. As you know, the Bulgaris family, they have the 21 acres out there. They've been farming it since the 1800s. If you go out there, most of the land currently is being farmed for corn. It's about 75% of the land. There's a variety of butters out there with large parcels also, but most of those parcels are undevelopable because of the wetlands. The 21 acres, we want to put the four estate lots there. We thought that would be a good plan. Historically, I think the neighbors know that the project Forge Village, which was 14 lots submitted a number of years ago by the Chari Cars Corporation, which was a formidable corporation, although their submission lacked a lot of the studies that I think the board wanted, both from a wetland and perk test. And they just didn't pay attention to it. And during the process, the principal of the development got sick. He eventually died. It somewhat withered for a while. I believe they withdrew eventually. And then Mrs. Yurkovich in the estate decided to put it on the market about two years ago, which we've been doing for her. And we got a number of offers through the gamut. There were people who wanted to use it as a solar farm. I'm not a solar guy, but I think the configuration of the lot didn't work. There was a pot nursery that's been popular around here, but that required a lot of federal and state permits that the Yurkovich and Bulgaris didn't want to wade through. There were some nonprofits locally, both on a, for horse farms. There was a kennel that was proposed. We just never really got any good offers until you came with the developers. And then once the residential developers came in, they were all over the place. And we just tried to tell them this 14 lot subdivision, 10 lot subdivision, it just wasn't going to fly. Some of them who threaten you with superseding zoning issues that they don't need frontage. I don't think Mrs. Yurkovich, and I know the Bulgaris didn't want to get into a long fight. They've been there for many years. They've sold houses to neighbors out there. So for the past year and a half, I think we focused on trying to just do the four estate lots. Bob can get into all of that. In this past year and a half, we've done a lot of studies that were requested. We've met informally with the board. We've contacted a number of neighbors, didn't talk to every single one of them, but we certainly availed ourselves to tell them what we were doing along the way. So I hope this is a plan that is best for the neighborhood, best for Mrs. Yurkovich and acceptable to the town. I'll leave it up to Bob to give you the best information.
Okay, and I'm going to share my screen here. I hope you can see the big blue box.
Yes, we can.
Let me try one more time here. There we go. Okay. So this is, you know, our assessors map with the star located in our 21 acre parcel. And you can see there's a narrow neck coming out to Orchard Street. We're in this default agricultural residential district. Here's the Merrimack Valley GIS map and you can see, you know, the different colored terrain where the agricultural activity occurs versus the perimeter woods. It's a very deep parcel. It's about this lot line along the sort of north side here is about 2,100 feet long. And there's about 600 feet of wooded area at the back of the parcel here. And there's some wetlands on the sort of this southwestern side. The previous developer had done some wetland flagging and got an ANRAD approved by the Conservation Commission. Earlier this year, we renewed the ANRAD and we, the Conservation Commission wanted us to go out and reprove much of the wetland lines. And we re-probed through all of these, you know, agricultural areas where the, really the soils become the determining factor for the wetland limits, but that was all sort of redone this past year. And so the ANRAD has been renewed reasonably recently. There's no flood zones on the property. There's no riverfront on the property. Although there is some riverfront that's close to the property. You can see Pearson Drive are sort of the single family residences just to the northeast of the property here. I know this application looks a little bit familiar to you because we came to you informally in June to discuss a four lot concept and a five lot concept. And we went away from the meeting with a clear message that the four lot would be preferable to the five lot. This was the layout we showed you in June and I'm just going to quickly flip to the present layout and you can see the differences. You have to look quick, but you can see there's a little difference in the stormwater treatment on the, just below the cul-de-sac. The houses are in the same locations, the lot lines in a little bit different locations, the size of the cul-de-sac, the length of the cul-de-sac. All that's pretty much the same. So there's the June and here's where we are. So I think we stayed pretty faithful to what we said we were going to do this summer when we saw you. And I'm going to flip, sort of quickly through some of the definitive plans. And I'm certainly happy to come back as we get to questions and answers and go over any particular issues. But, you know, the cover sheet really just provides our locus and it provides this list of waivers. The waivers, I think we had presented previously, but you know, we have one waiver, section 18C about waiving and environmental analysis for five lots or less. So we're asking the board to waive that analysis for this small subdivision project. There's a waiver about the 30-foot radius required at street intersections. We have a narrow strip of property coming out to the street intersection and it doesn't have those radius lines on it. So we're requesting a waiver for that. That narrow strip that comes out to Orchard Street is about 200 feet long. And so in that 200 feet, we have 50 feet of width. We don't have 53 feet of width in that area. There's a waiver requested regarding the crown in the center of the road. We have a crown in the center of the road through most of the length, but when we get into the cul-de-sac area, we're pitching all the water into the middle for stormwater management purposes. I'll show you that. We're asking for a waiver from the subdivision rules and regulations which require construction of sidewalks. There's no sidewalks on Orchard Street, so that I don't think. There's no sidewalks on Orchard Street, so that I don't think it would be helpful here. And we're requesting a waiver on street trees. Although we certainly, you know, the street trees are an issue. We're certainly happy to revisit that issue. So those are our the waivers that were listed there. We have a sheet of notes. We won't spend much time on that. And then we get into two sheets of existing conditions, and this sort of shows our topography. It shows our wetland areas. So here on our sort of southwestern side, we have a BVW area here. We have another BVW area here, and there's some, as we go further north or northwest, there's some more BVW on the property as well. That creates this one hundred-foot buffer zone line around those wetland areas, and that's the area that's in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. So as we finish up with the planning board process, we hope to file with the Conservation Commission and go through their notice of intent process for the project as well. The topography on the lot is not it's reasonably level. I think in this, in the area that we're working, the elevation varies from, I think, maybe there's a ten or twelve-foot grade change over the entire area. So it's a reasonably leveled. There's definitely a slope from the Pearson Drive Pearson Drive side down across towards the wetlands at the lower elevations, as you might have. This is the sort of the the portion of the site that's the furthest away from the road. And we're not going to be proposing any work in this area. Some people have asked about the big tree in the in the field. That tree is located out here, and so we're not going to be altering that tree or getting close to it with our proposed work. And again, just some more BVW out back here, and this is that last six hundred foot section that I referred to that's presently wooded. So here's our, these are our lot lines for the proposed Fieldsway. Fieldsway would be a private way. Again, it's fifty feet wide in the first two hundred feet, and then we widen to fifty-three feet as soon as we can. We have a generous hundred and sixty-five foot diameter cul-de-sac at the end, and the length of Fieldsway from Orchard Street to the very end is five hundred feet. We are then showing a common driveway to serve lots three and four. This is this section of common driveway here. This has a total length of five hundred feet. The common section, if you will, the section that serves both lot three and lot four is around three hundred feet long. That's this section right through here. All of the lots meet the minimum frontage and area requirements, one hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage is required, forty thousand square feet of land is required. So lot one, forty thousand square feet, lot two, a little bit more than forty. Lot three, I think, is fifty-four. That's about one point three acres. And with the balance of the land, most of the land in lot four, about sixteen point six acres. We also have some easement areas associated with the common driveway. So this easement here allows the owner of lot four to pass over land, which is technically lot three, to get to their lot. It also provides, you know, the access for the town and to access the property or people deliveries and things like that. So access and egress from lot four across the easement area. We also have an easement area here, which is for stormwater. I'll show you the stormwater as we go along. And again, I think I mentioned this, but this is this is proposed to be a private way. So the maintenance would be a homeowners association of some type. Again, our lotting plan, all of this backland is part of lot four. So here's our our site layout. You can see the four single-family houses, and we're showing next to the houses, the proposed septic systems. We have done septic system soil testing this fall with the Board of Health witnessing all of the tests in these areas. We found good sandy soils in this area here. We did do a number of testing in other portions of the site. I wouldn't say that we exhausted the potential areas for septic systems, but this 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 area here was sandier with thicker sand deposits than the other portions of the site, which were had had lower permeability. And or they had sand layers which were not four feet thick or greater. Four feet is the thickness required by the Title Five regulations. So and that's why lot four has this sort of dog leg that comes back around to provide a septic system for lot four in an area that's, you know, sort of behind lot two. But I think that if you look at the house, you know, arrangements, I think they all lay out in sort of a logical manner. And this, I don't, if you're in lot two, you're not going to know that there's a septic system in the back corner that's actually serving lot four, and there'll be a landscape easement or a use easement that allows lot two to use this land as if it was all theirs for the purposes of landscaping, but yet still protecting the septic system for lot four. We have some hydrants shown on this plan. We have a hydrant here at the intersection of Orchard Street and Fieldsway. We also have a hydrant proposed here and the at the back of the property or at the back of the cul-de-sac here with a I think we had a six-inch water line, sorry, eight-inch water line connecting the main and Orchard Street with the rear hydrant here. We then had some thinner copper lines, one-inch diameter copper serving lots three and four. We received this afternoon an email from the fire chief requesting an additional hydrant back here in the vicinity of lot four. And I had an opportunity earlier this evening to speak to Mr. McNiff about it, and we're okay with it. So we'll have four houses and three hydrants. This aerial sort of are basically taking the site plan and putting it over a recent aerial shows you how the layout sort of relates to the existing agricultural area. So you can see that, you know, our fourth lot is basically located where the where the agricultural land narrows up. You can see here's the wooded area. But then, you know, the agricultural land continues for a considerable distance beyond that. Again, the sort of that whole area to the back remains untouched with this proposal. And here's how, you know. Well, I think it's it's it shows how we relate to our our neighbors as well. This area where the stormwater management area is, is an area where there's currently some ruins of an older farm building foundation in this particular portion of the site as well. Let's see, that's just a zoom in of the layout that we just spoke about as the back zoom. This shows our site grading and drainage. I'm going to zoom in again here. Just because it's it's a little hard to see, but we are proposing a high point here. And so you come in off of Orchard Street at about a three percent pitch to the roadway, so pretty gradual. We're going to pick up as much of this roadway as we can in these catch basins and bring those catch bases are going to pipe the water back into the stormwater management area here. We also have some inlets because, again, the land slopes from Pearson Drive down towards the southwest. So we've got some inlets to get water into the drainage system here. We also have a catch basin in the middle of our cul-de-sac, which will pick up runoff from the cul-de-sac area and a drain inlet over here to pick up, pick up runoff from the land adjacent to lot two, get that into the stormwater management area here. We've prepared a stormwater management report, and we've done the calculations. We've provided it to the planning board as part of our application. And we expect that this will also be of interest to the Conservation Commission. We believe it meets all of the stormwater management standards and certainly have strive to to meet those standards as part of this project. At the back part of the area, the common driveway area, we just, we don't have the elevation to get this water into the stormwater management area. So we just are going to let the water cross the road and flow downhill to the BVW area, pretty much as it does today. So we've got a little culvert going underneath the the common driveway at this location. But again, grades are all pretty, pretty flat. There's a, you know, slight pitch to the road to make sure that it drains correctly, but generally a flat layout. Here's our profiles and just simply shows you know, a three percent slope coming off of Orchard Street, and I think a two percent back down into the cul-de-sac shows where our structure is going to be located, and similarly about a half a percent grade along the length of the common driveway with a two percent slope to push water from one side to the other. The width of the common driveway pavement is twenty feet, and it was two foot shoulders on each side. The width of the main roadway is twenty-two feet with two foot shoulders on each side as well. Some details, which I'd be happy to address any questions about those, but they're pretty, pretty straightforward. The other details that we've included in the last sheet are associated with the types of plants to be planted in the in the stormwater wetland, stormwater treatment area. I'm going to go back to the site plan just to get ready for questions and answers, and that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to address your questions at this time.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Michael, and thank you very much. Before we start, Martha, I'm just, I start with questions with the board. Martha, I'm going to ask if there's anything that you want to comment on before the board starts asking its questions.
Not a present.
Okay, great. Then let me start with George. George, you have any questions at this time, sir?
No, it's a very good presentation. One of the questions I would ask is there a possibility of providing lighting at the entranceway so that no one else coming up and down Orchard Street is concerned about where to turn in? I'm not worried about signage, but just maybe a name of what your private way is and some lighting right there.
Sure. Good idea.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Appreciate that. Leslie, any questions or comments at this time?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. There was reference to the land is still being farmed. And I'd like to know who who is still farming the land at this point in time?
Mike, I don't recall the name of the person that farmed the corn.
I don't know the name either. I apologize. I know Mrs. Yurkovich would know if he's there and can speak to it, but they've been doing it pretty regularly. They do it for many years, I believe. They'll probably do it this year, depending upon how this approval goes. But it's been corn.
Okay, I I because I was completely unaware of the fact that the land was still being farmed. I just thought it was sitting idle. I have another question. The you said there was one. Let's see. What what is the width of the the road coming in off of Orchard Street?
So the pavement is twenty-two feet wide with two foot shoulders on each side.
So that that will meet with the requirements of the emergency vehicles.
That's correct. And we also provided some turning diagrams as part of our application demonstrating that the the largest Newbury fire vehicles could make it around the cul-de-sac and could turn around in the areas provided for that.
And as far as the common driveway, you spoke about the elevation of the land and that you were going to leave it as is to let it drain normally. But that drainage is is on a farmland facility, but not a a road, a paved road. So how how is that going to work?
So the road will be elevated above the existing land. And in effect, the the road almost becomes a dam from to prevent water going from the Pearson Drive side down to the wetland side. So what we do is we collect that water and we, for example, in the out by lot three and four, we have a pipe that will carry the water safely underneath the road here. And then between lots two and three, the water will run downhill and be picked up at this pipe here and brought into the stormwater management system. Once the road, once the water crosses the road between lot three and four, it will flow downhill, eventually reaching the wetlands that are in the sort of southwestern portion of the site.
Okay, so it's flowing off of now constructed area, so it'll have a different kind of the water will be different from what's flowing now. Now, my next question is, has a traffic survey been done?
No, we haven't done a traffic study. Please. We we haven't done an individual traffic study, and I don't think that it's necessarily warranted. In this instance, we have four single-family houses. We've got good visibility on Orchard Street, and Orchard Street is a, you know, a pretty good-sized road with decent volume on it. So I think that Orchard Street can clearly handle the volume from the four houses, and I don't think that we have any significant stopping site distance issues at this location.
And my last question is about septic. So lot four will feed, their septic will feed into actually lot two. But where does the leaching field factor into that?
So that's not exactly correct, and I may have explained it poorly. But if you can see in this diagram, here's lot four out here. And so there'll be a pump chamber, and the pump chamber will discharge septic tank effluent through a pipe located in this strip here to a leaching field located here. So this dog leg sort of portion of lot four, it's all lot four's land. So the the septic system is on their property. But it might look, if you were in lot two, as as part of the lot two backyard. And so there'll be an easement over the septic system area that allows lot two to use this for recreational purposes. For example, it'll look like their yard. And lot two has a septic system over here, sort of, you know, similar. It's also in this good sandy soils. But we'll accomplish the lot two backyard with an easement over this particular portion of lot four.
Doesn't there have this is my question, and I'm, I just, I'm not an expert on any of this, but as far as the leaching field, what is the elevation that the leaching field is usually on a downgrade? So what's the how is that going to, is that going to be an electronic pump? That's going to pump it over to the lot two, or how is that going to work?
Right. So I think in all of these, all four septic systems will include pumps because we have a somewhat shallow groundwater table. We had good perkability or a good rapidly permeable soils. We have sandy soils that perk fast, and they have to, the bottom of that septic system has to be five feet above the high groundwater table. So that sort of starts to lift the septic system out of the ground a little bit. And so we'll have to, you know, there'll be a little bit of a mound and shape to those septu- to those leaching fields. And we'll try to blend it in with some soil so that it doesn't look like it just sort of looks out of place. But all of those septic systems involve pumps, and they're all slightly elevated above the ground surface because of the shallow groundwater table.
Thank you very much for all your answers. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Leslie. Woody, do you have any questions at this time, sir?
Yes, I have two questions. You mentioned that it's still currently grown and corn. I I knew that. Is is it in sixty-one A still, or have you taken a sixty?
So the property is still in sixty-one A, and really, it's the owners, you know, the estate of Louis Bulgari's determination as to when to request to take it out of sixty-one A. I expect that, you know, shortly after the planning board process is complete, would be an appropriate time that they'll they'll make that request, but it's really up to them.
Okay. And my second question, excuse me. We got, it's in regards to lot four and where where the leaching field is going to go. Do you have faith that there's enough room around lot three to protect the natural screening that's along that northeast of eastly border of all the lot? For the neighbors.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. And we've intentionally, you can see from the aerial photograph that, you know, this this sewer line, which essentially are, you know, forced main line that serves lot four is running between the trees in the back of the lot three property line. Now, this is an inch and a quarter, inch and a half diameter pipe, or maybe a two-inch diameter pipe at the most. So it it doesn't require a huge construction excavation. I don't think we're going to be taking down trees to install the two-inch line. So I, you know, our intention is to leave the vegetation as is.
Okay, thank you. That was a concern of mine due to the screening of the existing houses. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Woody. Michael and Bob, thanks for the presentation. I do appreciate it very much. I do have a couple of questions, comments. First, I appreciate your desire to have this to be a private way. I think that is appropriate. And the planning board would be in support of that. I also had concerns and that were just articulated by Woody with regards to sixty-one A and when the decision would be made for that to transition. And so we're talking about this and going forward with this concept. I also have concerns because we have run into this in other situations. And so I think we're trying to take a position from a planning board statement that we preserve any wooded buffered perimeters that are currently in place to that are currently in place to provide privacy to the already existing housing. It's now becoming a very sensitive issue for me, and I think it's probably a sensitive issue for other members of the board because we've we've run into this. And so I think we're going to take a very forward stance on this, that we want that maintained and to plan accordingly. So with that said, those were my two comments that Woody had touched on. Hey, Martha, is it appropriate for this to be going through conservation at the same time in case we have questions that we have to bounce to conservation? Or because that's usually how a lot of our our applications have been handled in the past. Could I just ask that one to you?
Right. I mean, generally, we like we like them to be going pretty much concurrently so that if there are changes that come out of the Concom, they can come back to the planning board and vice versa, so that so that, say, the planning board doesn't approve something that then goes to Concom, and it has to come back for modification. So, you know, we encourage concurrent if at all possible.
Great. Thanks for that clarification. And I'm going to.
Question?
Go ahead, George.
Yeah. Who is responsible for the maintenance of the interconnectability of lot four and other homes to the private sewer? Is there a private sewer line on the ground? No. But I want to make sure that when lot four has a problem with their system, that they're not going to take care of it on their own if this piping to lot two. How do you handle that?
I believe they're separate, George.
Okay.
So lot four is going to have its own system. Lot two will have its own system, at least I would on this 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 submission.
And that's that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lengthy line from lot four down to lot two. Is that correct?
Well, again, the the leaching field is technically on lot four land. It might look like it's on lot two land, but it really is on lot four land. So the lot four will have the right to, you know, maintain the system. It's entirely on their property.
Very well. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Couple of the questions that I'm going to ask, I think I saw Channing on here. Let me just see. He was here. Good. So I'm going to ask him to to pipe in to see if there's any historical. Once we get done with our questions, Jenny, if there's any historical significance of that foundation with regards to the stormwater management plan. And continuing on, if I if I looking at this correctly, Bob and Michael, it looks like one sixty eight is going to have loss of drop some driveway. Now, is that driveway with those that was currently on that that had an easement to be in existence, or it was just on the property boundary?
It's just. Okay, I think it shows better here, but here's the one sixty eight property. Their existing driveway encroaches into the land of the the applicant here, the state of Louis Bogaris. Okay, I don't believe there's any easement necessarily associated with that. But Mr. McNiff has had some discussions with the neighbor about, you know, how we're going to improve his driveway and stop this encroachment from occurring and while still giving him a reasonable driveway to get in and out of his property.
Wonderful. I appreciate that. And do I remember that there was a stone wall from the property one seventy two that was also kind of bumping into this? This parcel?
Yeah, my my recollection of the survey work is that the stone wall is right on the property line. It's not encroaching is my recollection.
Okay, great. And I'm going to ask this question. And I think I heard you heard you correctly in your presentation that the intention is to maintain lot four pretty much indefinitely as a sixteen acre parcel, so that wouldn't be at any time divided. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I did write a lot of questions down. I'm sorry, guys. And with regards to the the septic fields, you are going to try to make those non-elevated, and I understand you, the the depth is is a question. Is there a consideration to to try to minimize that or bring fit, bring materials in to make that as level as possible?
We'll definitely try to do some landscaping and put some fill around the sides of the septic system so they don't look like they're, you know, just sticking out like a sore thumb, but all of them have to be elevated. All of them, you know, have the same sort of shallow groundwater table issue and five feet of separation required because they're in rapidly permeable soils. And this is all new construction, so we're not entitled to ask the Board of Health for any waivers from any Title V criteria.
All right, okay. And so what just so I can appreciate you, what would that elevation be about? Think about two or three foot?
Yeah.
Okay, and then on the between three and four. You're going to be having that culvert going underneath. Is there going to be a little swell on the the with the side of that common driveway to capture that?
Yeah, the the driveway essentially, you know, creates a little bit of an embankment that and water will run along longitudinally along the embankment and then enter the pipe and go to the outside after it passes underneath the driveway.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. Those are my initial just quick look look through at this time. Let's see. All right. Before I open for public comment, Martha, do you have any questions you want to ask? And then if you've had any comments from town departments?
I I did have some questions. I wanted to hear what the board's questions were first, and a lot of them actually were addressed. So I also was concerned about maintaining the the buffer between this property and the the Pearson Drive people and the questions about sixty one A. What is the plan for landscaping in the island in the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, I would anticipate, you know, some low growing shrubs in the probably a little bit of lawn in that area as well. But we certainly don't want to put anything that's going to cause any visibility constraints, but at the same time, make it, you know, high enough so you don't want to drive over it.
Right, right. Okay, so presumably we'll be getting a planting plan as this goes forward.
Sure.
For review. And just wanted to go back to the hydrology a little bit, because as you noted, it it slopes sort of downward on the drawing towards towards the west, and you noted that the roadway is going to act her as a dam. You'll be collecting the stormwater, and that will be continuing to head into the wetlands. I guess my question was, and I I know that you addressed this, just to make sure that 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 it's being captured and directed enough so that there isn't going to be any negative impact on, you know, on flow going into the wetlands going forward with that roadway.
No, I mean, we're not going to be stopping water from getting, you know, from the Pearson side down towards the wetlands. It's going to, you know, the the gradient of the land is such that it's going to get there. But we will have to, you know, pick it up with our stormwater management devices and system as part of this process.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mr. Chair, may I ask one more question?
Yes, Leslie, please.
If you what are your plans to stop that water? If if it's just going to flow down into the wetlands, but it's going to flow down differently because there'll be buildings and roadways, you know, in place of a natural land. How how do you plan on making sure that it it just doesn't, it's not just an overflow?
Yeah, so let me see if I have a better diagram here. So this is the portion of the site closest to Orchard Street again. And you can see we've got some pipes that will bring water to our constructed wetland. So the constructed wetland regulates you know, the discharge of water because there's a weird type of device that holds water in the wetland area and in this wetland area as well as, you know, the plant life filtering and improving the quality of the stormwater before it goes to the wetlands that are down below. It will also allow water to percolate down towards the groundwater table and in that manner, get into the groundwater table and flow to the BVW in this area. So the the water management works both from the point of view of, you know, our our constructed wetland treating stormwater, but also encouraging percolation into the groundwater table as a means of getting that water eventually into the BVW and keeping the BVW from drying up. On the western part of the the northern part of the site, you know, we again, we don't have a a large constructed weapon like we have here. But by creating this, to some extent, a dam preventing water from going directly from Pearson to the BVW, we create relatively level areas uphill of the of the culverts at which stormwater can infiltrate down, eventually reaching the groundwater table and then flowing to the BVW through the groundwater regime. I expect that in heavy rainstorms, some amount of water will make it into the pipe, but during the 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 smallest rainstorms, there'll probably be no water getting into these pipes. It will just infiltrate into the lawns or the soils, the plant beds and things like that, and eventually reach the groundwater table and float to the BVW in that manner.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Leslie. Martha, now I'm going to ask if you've received any comment from town departments?
Received some comments from town departments. One email from the police chief, which was forwarded to the board members as well as to the applicant. Comments, as noted earlier, Chief Jen from this afternoon regarding the the turnarounds at the common driveway and also the request for the additional hydrant. Some other more informal comments. Our DPW director had noted that he would prefer that the roads stay private. So that was good to hear that. Our health director, Deb Rogers, noted that she did witness the perk test for the septic systems here, and they were all good. Building Commissioner has no concerns and Samantha Holt, the conservation agent noted that, as we know, that the notice of intent has not been filed yet. She had no particular concerns immediately, but it will need to go through the process. And I do see that that Channing has his hand up.
Okay, so I will open this now up for public comment.
Oops, and I'm sorry, I forgot. I did get one one email from one of the Pearson Drive residents. And I hope I pronounced that correctly. At twenty one Pearson Drive.
That's also available for public review as well as for the board to review in our packet.
Yes, it's not on the website, but it's available for it has been sent to the applicant and to the board members.
All right. So we shall now open this up for public comment. Martha, I'm going to let you direct the flow.
Well, I would say Channing Howard has his hand up, so.
Okay, Martha, and thank you for everybody for the presentation. As far as the historical commission goes, the foundation of the barn, I don't think we have any comment of jurisdiction there. It is part of the original Longfellow Farm on the property, but just being a foundation, I don't see of any important architectural historical relevance there. So that would be my only comment from the historical commission. I do have some public comments if I could go forward.
Thank you, Channing. Please go ahead.
Okay, a couple of things. The as far as the twenty four foot wide road, the statement that the fire department is okay with the twenty four, twenty five, twenty foot wide paved road is maybe what they're going along with, but the fire department does ask for a twenty four foot wide road. Continuing talking about the radiuses at the junction with Orchard Street and the radiuses at the hammerhead at lot four. Fire Department by law requires a, I believe it's a thirty five radius. I see on the plan twenty. I don't know what the fire chief's comments were today. But yeah, both places for the fire trucks to turn around, they they need a longer radius and to make the turn in from Orchard Street, they need the thirty five radius. Other comments of mine would be the location of the fire hydrants. You don't put fire hydrants at intersecting roads because the snowplows put snow on top of them. You put these fire hydrants on the straightaways. Fire hydrant at the cul-de-sac should be at the entrance of the cul-de-sac, not on the backside of it. That way, snow won't go stacked on top of it. My question for the board is, is this applicant has six waivers? And I'd like the board to comment on from reading from their bylaws, if the board finds it in the public interest, these waivers would be accepted. Where is it in the public interest that these six waivers shall be waived? That's the end of my questions.
Thank you very much, Channing. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to question at this time?
See, actually, it might be helpful if you could stop sharing your screen. I'm actually not seeing any other people with raised hands at the moment.
All right.
Yep. Scott and Val, they did have their hands raised, Scott and Valerie.
Okay, Scott and Valerie, if you could identify yourself and your address, please. Thanks.
Yes, hello. Hopefully you can hear us. Okay. Can you hear us? Okay?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. We're Scott and Valerie. We're at one seventy three Orchard Street, which from the plan, you can kind of just see our house at the be right at the end of the Perthie Road. So, you know, directly butters right across the street on Orchard. You know, there was a comment about the traffic on Orchard Street not necessarily needing a traffic plan. I can tell you for a fact that that, you know, having our driveway right the way the road would be, it is, you know, that people fly up that street, and it is like a blind street. And when we're backing in our driveway or trying to get out of driveway, we have to stop and make sure that we're we're paying attention and looking. And so putting an intersection right there is definitely something that we're not favorable for. You know, I mean, it's already extremely busy. The cars that Orchard Street is very busy. There's a lot of people that live on this street. And in the spring, summer and fall, when the the cyclists start popping up on the weekends, it's somewhat sometimes impassable with the with the huge amount of bikers that go up and down Orchard Street. So this, you know, I, you know, we totally understand land wants to be developed, but we want to keep that in mind that we're really not happy where that road enters onto Orchard Street. Not to mention the lights and everything that would be shining constantly right in our house, which is right there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments and your participating today. Thank you. Martha, next.
Helen, I hope I pronounce this correctly. Helen Martokio.
I'm from twenty four Orchard Street. And I I decided to participate in the meeting a little sensitive to, again, the traffic on Orchard Street. So I'm even though it is probably three quarters of a mile away from me. I am concerned I drive Orchard Street a lot, and I do agree that there's concern for me with cars coming in and out of the driveway to the private way. Sometimes there are mornings when Pearson Drive, there are issues with cars, the way, you know, coming out and potential colliding onto Orchard Street. So again, my concern is, and I think that there's more the chance of more blind spots there. So I am concerned about that. I'm also a little sensitive to the fact of developers wanting to have and I apologize, I don't know the I can't remember the term, but have some verifications bypassed. I mean, we, you know, we have a project that's, you know, in well, I'm not sure where it stands, the Marsh Middle Project, but there's a lot of requests of the select board to bypass, you know, certain types of test and verification. So I'm a little sensitive to that. And I think that if the development holds its weight, then I think going through those verifications shouldn't hurt its progress. So I I don't see why that's something that should be alleviated in terms of that particular property.
Helen, thank you very much for your comments and your participation tonight. It's really very important for us to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is is Channing Howard. All right, next up is, is Channing Howard.
Yes, uh, could we hear what the, uh, comments from the police chief are?
Sure, would you like me to? Would you like me to read her email?
Uh, at, at least a, a brief, brief points or, uh, approval, disapproval?
Um, yeah, I'm happy to read that. Um, so I am in receipt of your notice of request for a common driveway special permit at one seventy Orchard Street for a four lot residential subdivision at one seventy Orchard Street. I have reviewed your attachments and have visited the site in question, um, she included panoramic image, refers to that. I found that the stretch of Orchard Street appears sufficiently wide enough to safely manage additional incoming and outgoing traffic from this location. Should a bus need to stop on Orchard Street at this location, there is significant visi- significant visual depth to do so safely. If the intent would be to allow for school bus pickup within the cul-de-sac, the access would need to be wide enough to accommodate the bus turning around. Generally speaking, the Newbury Police Department is frequently asked to respond to civil property disputes relative to shared driveways. We've found that many times clear expectations between property owners have not been set forth prior to the sale of homes with shared driveways, thus increasing police calls for service. If possible, I would recommend that clear guidelines between property owners be outlined and included in the sale of any new homes on a shared driveway. Examples of recurring concern in this, these scenarios are, who is responsible for maintaining expenses associated with the common driveway? Whether or not cars are allowed to be parked on the common driveway? And whether or not the common driveway is allowed to be used for recreational and personal purposes such as children riding bikes, use of recreational motorized vehicles, ATV, dirt bikes, et cetera, or the installation of basketball nets on and near the driveway. I hope you find this information helpful, please let me know if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, those are good points.
Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Okay, next, next is Jerome Strazula.
Hi, thank you, Martha, um, I have a quote, a couple of questions for Bob and.
Let me just, uh, in, in direct for a second, I just need your address for the record, thanks so much.
My apologies, Pete, um, Jerry Strazula, one seventy-two Orchard Street. As you're coming into the drive, the rock wall is on my property and I'm off to the left as you're coming into the development. Um, I had a couple of questions. As far as the drive coming into the, um, development, will, it's so overgrown with, there's a bunch of dead trees and whatnot, will all those be removed? You know, prior to the, the street being developed, and secondly, your water overflow in the back of my property, where the ruins are right now, where the foundation was for the barn, that's got right now probably eighteen inches to two feet of water, standing water in it right now. With four homes going in there and a roadway, that's going to displace all the, the permeable surface. What are we gonna get stuck with afterward, four feet of water back there? And is it gonna bring in bugs?
Yeah, so, um, the, uh, first, re- regarding the clearing along the lot line, we will need to clear along the lot line to construct the road, and there's some drainage, uh, going along that side as well. Uh, there's an infiltration trench, uh, to capture water that we can't get into the stormwater management system. The cul-de-sac area is going to be elevated a little bit above the existing grade, and that gives us some gradient to push water into the, uh, stormwater management area. We're also going to be excavating down, uh, into the ground to construct that, uh, constructed wetland. It's not really intended to have standing water all the time, but it is intended to have, uh, wetland plants that will be able to grow um, and, uh, treat the water as, you know, during the growing season at least, uh, and filter it by running the water through the plants and the roots in that area. Uh, so it will be, you know, it'll, it'll certainly have saturated soil, but it shouldn't look like a pond, though.
Okay. I'm just concerned about, I've got a dry property right now and I want to keep it that way, that's my concern.
Right.
I've seen your prior developments, I lived in Beverly, Mike did a development right across the street from me and the work was stellar, we had no water issues and I just want to be as, you know, assured that there's not going to be water issues.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, appreciate you participating tonight, your comments.
Next we have Pete. If you could give your last name and address, please.
There we go, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Pete Mack, one sixty-eight Orchard Street, my wife and I live, uh, right next to Jerry. Um, I too have concerns with regards to, uh, the water. That barn foundation that, uh, Jerry has referenced has held water for twelve years that we've lived here. In addition to that, the water table is relatively high coming off the field. In fact, we have two sump pumps built into our, uh, pad in our basement and just recently, uh, one has started cycling on a regular, a regular basis, um, with regards to foundations and, um, septic systems out in the field there. Is there any study with regards to how that's going to affect water flow coming, or underground water flow coming out off the field? I'm sure Jerry wants his driveway and his home dry, we would like to have our, uh, house remain dry as well. That would be one. Number two, I can attest to the fact that the traffic, um, at this particular location is, uh, less than savory at times. You're coming up a hill and on a bend, if you're coming up from the base of Orchard Street, uh, you're taking a left essentially at the crest of a hill, oncoming traffic is going to have a difficult time. Correcting for somebody pulling in front of them, we've had a couple of accidents here over the years and, uh, nothing that's been horrible, but, uh, at the same time, with a slightly increased traffic count, left and right turns, um, that might be, might be a hindrance, uh. So yeah, that's, that's where we stand with regards to issues that, um, crossed our minds. Thank you for hearing me.
So, so the, uh, the septic systems are constructed above the groundwater table, so they won't affect the groundwater flow. Um, and they're several feet above the groundwater table, so they shouldn't have any effect on water moving in the groundwater regime, you know, to the, to the BVW areas. Uh, but you're right, there's a, there's sort of a generally a high groundwater table, uh, in, in those agricultural fields and, uh, as a consequence, that, that does cause us to have to elevate the septic systems a little bit, as we mentioned. Uh, in, in regards to the traffic, I know, you know, others have mentioned this as well, I think that, you know, if you're on a bend, the safest, you know, place for new drivers is on the outside of the bend, which is where this is located. I think with our cars coming, you know, they're going to be coming nose out, we're not going to be backing out onto Orchard Street or anything like that, like some other driveways do. Uh, I, I, I think the, the visibility is actually pretty good and we can probably collect some data to, to quantify it, but I, I didn't see this as a particularly difficult place to, uh, to enter Orchard Street.
Thank you, Peter, appreciate your participation tonight, thanks, and your questions.
Uh, Mr. Chair, may I interject for a moment?
Uh, one sec, I think we have one more public question, and then I'll go back, uh, go back to the board in a second, Les.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry Strazula has another question.
Thank you, Martha, Jerry at one seventy-two, I had one other question I forgot to ask. The lamp pole that is at the base of the drive on the corner of the entrance and Orchard, is that not lamp pole, but actually electric pole, is that going to remain where it is there?
It looks like it can remain where it is. It, it looks like it can remain where it is.
So then you're, everything's going to be underground fed to the back lots?
Yeah, so they'll be, um, see, we got, right, so there would be some, uh, what we call risers coming off of the pole, bringing the, uh, electric and telephone lines underground, and then they'll run underground along the, uh, field's way to get to the residences.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, so, uh, Bob and Mike, I know that you've had a, an opportunity to answer some questions and the, there's probably going to be an opportunity on our next public hearing to circle back with any questions that haven't been able to be answered, uh, at this time. So I'm just going to back, go back to our board members to see if they have any other questions that have popped up from this discussion. I'm going to start, uh, George, do you have anything, uh, that's, uh, that's, uh, come to your thoughts at this time?
Yeah, I, at this time, I have nothing for them.
Okay, thank you, George. Uh, Leslie, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I do, um, I'd really like to see a traffic study done in that location. Traveling that road on a regular basis myself, it is a little tricky right in that area. And it, we're only talking about a couple of houses that are right on the street, but now you're talking about the subdivision and, and, you know, increasing the, the amount of traffic that will be coming out onto the street. So, uh, for safety reasons, I would like to see a traffic study done on that location. That's, that's my, that's all I have.
Thank you, Leslie. Um, Woody, do you have anything else this time, sir?
Um, just a comment that, uh, Pete and Jerome, did what they had to say and realizing the, how close they are to this new road. Um, if there was any screening or, uh, fence or anything proposed, or along the breast, two hundred feet or so of the, uh, new roadway to alleviate some noise for the immediate neighbors. Um, other than that, I don't have any other questions.
Thanks, Woody, that's a great, uh, great, uh, comment about, uh, some sort of visual barrier, uh, on either side. Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, I think it's probably, oh, I see a hand popping up, Martha.
Uh, yes, Scott and Valerie, again.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you, sorry, um, I would venture that same question if there'd be any proposed visual barrier for us as well. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Scott. Um, I think it's appropriate probably Martha, this time, uh, to think about a sidewalk, uh, for the board to, to take a look at this so that we could have a, a, a good understanding prior to our next, uh, for the continuation of this public hearing. So, that being said, uh, let's, uh, take a look, we're now into the month of February, um, our, I would think we'd probably be con- continuing this in probably our first, our first meeting in March. So that gives us a couple of weeks to try to plan for a sidewalk, um. I'm going to let you throw some suggestions, Martha.
No, I think it's fairly wide open, um.
All right, I'll stop next to you. Is there any day that is bad for any of the board members?
That's what I can think of.
Okay.
The twentieth is a holiday, so I, I'd say that's probably not a great day for some people, it's also the beginning of school vacation for anybody who has kids.
Okay, um, so if we were to look, uh, within the next, uh, let's say, uh, uh, if not week or two, if we were to look at the week of the thirteenth, um, we, we have a, we, we have our next meeting, um, which is going to be the fifteenth. Uh, but is there any, um, availability either that week or the following week? Um, and I'm open to, to suggestions if we wanted to consider um, a Monday morning stroll? Um, or a Thursday afternoon?
I'm going to be, I'm going to be away the week of the thirteenth of February, but, uh, I'll be back the week of the twentieth.
Okay, so I think you'd want to be present, so.
I think it'd be helpful, yeah.
Okay, let's go to the twentieth, so now we're looking at, um, how about one, so that is going to be, um, during, uh,
to make it.
This is a spring break, uh, February vacation. Um, is that going to be an issue for any of our board members or staff?
Not for myself, no.
Okay.
What did, what day did you say, Peter?
So I was looking, I was just going to start at the, the, the top of the week, well, the, the first day is, uh, is a holiday, so it's probably going to be looking at Tuesday, the twenty-first?
Yeah, the twenty-first, twenty-second and twenty-fourth, the five would be, the twenty-third, I have a appointment midday.
Okay, so let's think about the twenty-first, now we don't want to get out there first thing in the morning because it's going to be rather chilly. So I'm going to s- suggest maybe about a, a ten AM or eleven AM, uh, sidewalk?
The twenty-first, okay.
Twenty-first.
It's, it's snow, it's waiting, people walking in.
Well, uh, eleven looks good for me.
Okay, Martha, is eleven o'clock good on your, on your schedule?
Um, I think that's fine.
Okay, Kristen, is that good on your schedule? That's good on your schedule, okay, George, is that good on your schedule?
Oh, it's like.
Whoopie, okay, not, not an issue. Leslie, is that good on your schedule?
Yes.
Okay, Woody, is that good on your schedule?
Yes, eleven and sunshine, sounds good.
I, I, I'm loving it, no snowflakes, and I'm going to go with the.
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, and Bob and, and Michael, is that good on your end?
We'll, we'll be there, yeah.
All right, I, I'm liking this, this is the first swing and we're hitting, okay. Uh, so let's go for the twenty-first of February, eleven AM, great. Uh, that being the case, um, I would, uh, entertain.
I'm sorry, before you do that, um, would it be possible, uh, by then to have the, the roadway and the cul-de-sac staked out?
Yeah, we actually have already set stakes along the, um, the roadway. I think we've got the one hundred, two hundred, four hundred and five hundred foot stakes in.
Okay, at, at center line stakes?
Yes.
The, the two closest of butters, would they be able to join so they could actually see what's going to be, uh, maybe happening in there?
Tuesday the twenty-first.
In there. The center.
So, I'm going to just r- run a quick question before I, I, we, I answer that, uh, Leslie. Uh, Martha, we don't, this would not be a, um, a posted meeting, correct?
It's not a posted meeting.
This is just going to be a sidewalk, so to answer your question, Leslie, if it's a sidewalk, it's basically for the board to go, uh, and gather information, not to have any discussions. And, uh, usually when we do sidewalks, we usually don't open them to the public for that, for, for, for one, that's one reason, and second is, we don't know if the applicant wants to have people other than the board on the, on the, on the sidewalk. So it's usually been our policy that we don't do that. Now, I can ask the applicant if he has any objections to having the butters, um, walk alongside, but there'd be no conversation taking place.
Everybody's, we have Pete and Jerry, every, and the man across the street, you're all welcome to come on in.
I just want to confirm that with Martha, Martha, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think that's fine, I mean, you, you laid out the parameters, there can't be any discussion or deliberation, but for information to be able to, you know, see, see where things are proposed.
Right, beautiful, okay, uh, with that understanding, beautiful, thank you, Leslie, um, so, um, that, our sidewalk will take place on the twenty-first, uh, at eleven AM, all right, I'm going to like to continue this, uh, uh, this, uh, hearing, so I would, uh, ask, uh, an entertaining motion, uh, to continue this to our first meeting of, in the month of March, uh, to continue the definitive subdivision plan, uh, uh, for the, uh, that date is, I'm going to pull it up, is going to be the first, is, am I correct, Mark, Martha, the first of March?
Yeah, it's March first.
March first at seven fifteen, so that would be to continue the definitive subdivision plan, uh, uh, continue that hearing to the first of March at seven fifteen, kind of, in a motion for that?
So moved.
So moved.
Uh, thank you, Woody, uh, for the motion, and second?
Second.
Thank you, Leslie, uh, any discussion on the motion? No discussion, roll call vote, George?
Yes.
Thank you, George, uh, Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie, and Woody?
Yes.
Thank you, the chair is in favor as well, uh, and I'd ask now for a motion to continue the, uh, uh, hearing for the common, uh, driveway special permit, uh, for the first of March, uh, also at seven fifteen.
So moved.
Uh, thank you, George, for the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, uh, thank you, uh, Leslie, for the second. Uh, discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none. Uh, George, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody. How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, and the chair is uh also in favor as well. Uh, everyone, I appreciate your participation, public uh uh participation, and I also. Appreciate the uh discussion with the applicants this evening.
Thank you. Great, thank you all and good evening. We'll see you uh. On the twenty first of eleven.
Great. Um. Okay, Martha, I'm gonna hold off on your continuation of the planners' uh report and go uh continuing on our agenda. Which is going to be new business, uh, fifteen Coleman Road, OSRD, Tom Z, manager of uh. Think oh, uh, LLC, uh, re, uh, view of the deed for parcel A. Um, do you want to give us a a little overview with what's going on with this right now, Martha?
So we did receive, or I I received a copy of the, the, the uh draft deed from. Um, Tom's attorney, and that was forwarded to to the board members. I did forward that to um Attorney Winner at uh Town Council's office who forwarded it on to his legal department. Um, we received some comments back about certain things that needed to be done before the town could actually accept the deed there. There were some mortgages on on Lot Seven that need to be discharged, and there needs to be an amendment to the homeowners agreement. Regarding that, um. Um, Attorney Chrisaro and um the attorney in in Brian's office ha- have since been communicating, and I think they've got a path forward. So it might, might make sense for the board to um. Possibly approve the deed um pending approval from from Town Council. And the Historical Commission will also need to accept it. And I don't know if there's anything that Tom would like to add to that.
Tom?
Uh, uh, thank you, Martha. Um, I think, uh, as I was following the um. Uh, the communication links today on this. I think all of the revisions that Brian and Brian's office uh had requested have been integrated into the. Into the document and um. The um, the releases um are already in hand. Um, they'll be uh recorded uh with the. Um, um, recording of other documents on the um remainder of Lot Seven with the house. Uh, hopefully, uh, in the next few days, uh, is the intent that, uh, so those will be in hand. And the um, there's also um the draft. Um, withdrawal of this uh parcel, of the Firestone, Witchstone parcel from the HOA. That's been drafted, and I believe that. Uh, Town Council has also looked at that as well.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Um, George, I I I want to ask you if you're comfortable with uh approval of this deed with uh. Uh, just pending a town council uh approval. Are you comfortable with that, sir?
Yes, as long as it's conditional.
Okay, great. Do you have any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay, thanks, George. Uh, Leslie, uh, are you comfortable also with uh approving this uh? Uh, uh, approving the deed pending a town council approval?
Yes, I am.
Beautiful, thank you. Let me ask Woody, Woody, uh, same question to you?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful, I am as well. That being the case, I would entertain a motion to approve the deed pending Town Council uh approval.
Motion to approve Town Council approval.
Thank you very much, Leslie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Uh, uh, on uh any discussion? Not seen any George on the motion. How do you vote, sir?
Pete, I'm sorry, there is a hand raise. I don't know if discussion, if you're accepting public comment or not.
Well, actually, it's not a public hearing, so we probably wouldn't be taking public comment. Uh, ju- this is just basically a business, right? Uh, for the, for the board to deal with. Yeah. Um, so. Uh, uh, happy to take a a a comment after the board has an opportunity to 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 vote. Uh, uh, George, I think you've, uh, your vote was yes.
Yes.
Yes, Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, Woody?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and the chairs in favor as well. Um, great. Uh, was there, uh, I'm going to allow a question at this point in time. Was there a question from uh public? Okay.
Uh, she's put her hand down. I don't see, um, I don't see it coming back up.
Okay.
Sorry, that was me. It was just a mistake. My, I hit the hand accidentally, sorry.
Not a problem. We understand technology oopses. All right, uh, continuing on our agenda, Martha, I'm going to uh get you back to your director's report.
Okay, um, let's see, just a couple of other things. Uh, three Newbury Port Turnpike, I've been um, had a couple of. Uh, discussions with TJ Melvin regarding, I mentioned last time that they they found that the soils are. A little different than they anticipated. Um. So there's going to need to be a change uh in the stormwater management, I think, from basically infiltration basin to a rain garden. Uh, they're all, they've also had some discussions with Newbury Port DPS about the uh connection to Newbury Port Water. So they're anticipating um having s- some revised drawings ready for the board to review. At the March first meeting. Uh, the question again will be whether the board considers these minor, minor modifications or basically field modifications. Or or major modifications.
May I ask a question? What they found is, did, did they find there was uh contamination?
No, it wasn't contamination. It's more that the soils, um, we're, we're just not going to infiltrate the way that they thought they, they were. I think they were expecting. More sandy soils and there's more clay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And they're proposing, they had originally, as far as the water connection is concerned, they were originally thinking of directional drilling underneath. Route one, and after talking to DPS, it seems like it's probably not the best way to go, and they're actually going to run the line. South along the. Um, you know, within the, the side of the right of way um to a connection point. Um, so those are, those are the two changes. Um, I also received an email from Rob Rosin today, Waterstone Engineering. About an additional modification that he's afraid is going to have to be made to the plan that was just approved. So. So it's something that he had actually shown on the drawings previously, which was um stone around the four poles at the, or the five poles at the point of interconnection. And those were removed in the last plan. Um, he was showing the turnaround for the fire. Trucks, but National Grid actually wants that still around those poles. So that's uh, I'm going to be coming back again, and his hope is that the board may find that that's a. A minor modification.
Great, let's hope that's the case. Perfect.
So, and the only other thing, uh, Kristen and I are going to tour um all of our projects under construction tomorrow. Um, we looked at a few today um on our way back from. Uh, from sixty eight Green Street, but just to um familiarize her with the things that are going on right now. And that's all I have.
Yeah, that's great. I've been um. Bringing myself out onto the tour and checking out the locations to see how they're coming along. And it's interesting.
Yeah, it is. They're all in different stages right now. I noticed that eighty-four, eighty-four Boston Road now has the foundation and the site has been pretty leveled and the foundation is in, so. Yeah, getting more of a sense of what that will look like.
Beautiful. Beautiful. Okay, thank you, Martha. Um, I don't think we're gonna, um, well, let's go to our reports. Uh, Leslie, what do you have for select board?
Nothing.
Okay.
It was a, it was under five minutes.
Okay.
Four minutes and like forty-seven seconds.
All right, um, ZBA, uh, Larry's not here, so there's nothing to report there. Conservation will be meeting next week. Uh, Martha, anything from MBPC?
Um. Not much, really. We had our planners' meeting last week. Um. And a lot of it was really um. Just filling the planners in on on the work that their different departments are doing. Uh, there was some, some discussion of the MBTA communities. Um. And the. Um, hazard mitigation plans I mentioned before is kicking off, as is the housing production plan, so.
Okay, um. So you just, you just sparked something, so we're going to need to probably revisit our schedule for uh the MBTA. Just so it stays fresh on everybody's uh. Our radar screen.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, 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 good. Um, is there anything else from any of the board members? I don't, I don't see anything else on our agenda. Okay, that being the case, I would entertain a motion uh at eight forty this evening. For adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Leslie. There's a motion. Is there? There's a second. Thank you, George. Uh, discussion, no discussion on the motion. Wonderful. George, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie.
Yes.
Thank you. Woody?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Welcome back, Kristen.
Cheers as well, and uh, yes, Kristen, welcome back and thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good night.